Councilmember Abdul Ghawad.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Burke, absent. Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Mayor Turnbull.
Present. Could you please join me in the rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have no presentations or awards tonight, and nobody has signed up for personal appearances, so we'll move into staff reports. Mr. Feerborn?
Thank you, sir. I'd ask Ms. Warner to make a report.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a reminder that the MML Westgate Civic Leadership Award Banquet will be held on July the 21st in Blue Springs. If you plan to attend, please let the city clerk's office know by July the 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a report.
Thank you, Mr. Feerborn. Mr. Mayor, members of council. In addition to my written report, I want to update council on a couple of items. We continue to monitor the performance of the oxygenation system that was put online earlier this year, and just want to report it is still performing as anticipated and as specified, especially during the hot, dry weather we've had here, so it continues to operate as planned. Also, we took delivery of the trailer-mounted concrete mixer today. Unfortunately, the truck driver drove off with the key. And so we are attempting to get that back so we can test it out and see how things are working. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Feerborn?
Thank you, Mike. We all learned that at the same time, including me. I would ask Ms. Howe to make a report, please.
Good evening. I will begin with the June Arts Commission Report. You guys have already been updated on the status of the public art project, which is in process right now, and have received a report on how summer scene went. So the only thing that I will add is that at its June meeting, the Arts Commission adopted a work plan for the remainder of this fiscal year and continued to develop its work plan and budget for fiscal year 2017. The work plan for the remainder of 2016 is included in your packet, and I would be happy to answer any questions about that.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
The other item that I have to update you on tonight is the out-of-state-vehicle-sales-tax election that is coming up. So this week, the city of Raymore, along with other cities in the metro, launched our informational campaign for the August 2 election. As you recall, we timed this election to coincide with other major communities in the metro, including Independence, Blue Springs, and Lee's Summit. From a communication perspective, all of the cities have worked together to create standardized messaging so that we can benefit from any media coverage on the issue so that we're all saying the same thing. And over the next month, you will see staff attending community meetings to speak on the issue, information on our website and social media sites, and a mailing going out to every residence in the city. For those in the audience and those watching, in August, residents will be asked to consider whether or not the city should discontinue the collection of the sales tax on vehicles purchased out of state. This is an existing tax that currently brings in about $75,000 in revenue to the city. The question is phrased in such a way that a no vote would allow the city to continue to collect this revenue, and a yes vote would eliminate the tax and this revenue. The tax at hand is only the sales tax on vehicles purchased out of state. Sales tax will still be collected on vehicles purchased in-state. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howe. Just one, I would ask Mr. Eke to make a report.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm going to go ahead and broadcast the presentation that will be made.
Thank you, Mr. Feerborn. Just wanted to quickly update and also unveil the new city website that we've been working on for about the last nine months. Really, the important pieces that I really wanted to show off tonight and pull together was to talk a little bit about some of the work that went into it from a city staff standpoint, as well as from vision. Really, the important thing that I think is, or the thing that is going to be important to really look at, is how we've altered our homepage. The homepage currently has about 60 links on it that direct users to a variety of different pages and programs within the city website. And what we were beginning to discover was that our users were very easily confused when they came to the homepage. What you're looking at right now is a heat map that indicates where mouse, a user's mouse would hover when they visited the website. Typically, it would hover around the top, wouldn't actually get any deeper into the site. To give you some comparison, a normal website would actually have what looks like the capital letter F, as users would scroll across the navigation at the top, and then down the side navigation, and then any content. As you can tell from our site, we were not generating that kind of user interaction. That also led to, what's very important to understand, a lack of actual clicks on the homepage. So instead of actually going deeper into the website, users would become frustrated and would, in fact, only click on the search bar to find the information that they were looking for. So this led us to a couple of conclusions that allowed us to better design a homepage and better design the site itself. And if I can, is there a way to escape that? I'm very excited to be able to show you the new look of the city of Raymore website. The site itself is much simpler, it's cleaner, it's more visual. It also is going to lend itself to a much easier navigation for residents who, one, are looking for items as their intended, as residents, looking at utilities, bill pay, information about parks and recreation. It's also going to be much more friendly to folks who are looking to do business here, open a business, or economic development. And also, this is an area where I think we can do much more expansion in a way of exploring, whether you're going to becoming a new resident, wanting to look for more arts, cultural activities, or other events going on within the city. And then finally, City Hall itself is going to be much easier to navigate and find information about. The site itself also is much more mobile dynamic, so whether you're viewing from a tablet or a cellphone, the site will maintain its structure, its visual elements, and you'll be able to have a much more robust user experience. Any questions? This is, of course, yes. There are still some links and items that need to be worked on and updated, or won't be going live until later in the month, so the inmate search and the birth certificate are services that we don't offer as a city. They are merely just placeholders for the meantime.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eke. Just want to remind the council that there will be no work session next week as we celebrate the Independence Day holiday, and because at the time that we would be in here, there's a bit of a celebration here in Raymore, I would ask Mr. Musteen to make a report.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, members of the council. One week from tonight, we will have our annual Fourth of July event, and this is by far the largest event and the largest investment in an event that we produce for the city, so we're very excited about this. A lot of man-hours, a lot of work has gone into this. So I'm passing a flyer out, handing a flyer out to you for your own information. It's available on the website for those that are watching tonight as well. Like I said, it's Fourth of July. We host this event on the day. We do a large fireworks event. The activities start at 4:00 PM that day with a car show, and concessions will be available. We also have food vendors and kids' games that are throughout the day over by the playground area. I'd like to mention Kona Ice will be there as one of the vendors. Pathways Church will be there again, providing free watermelon to everybody. Assembly of God will be doing yard games, kids' games, that type of stuff. We have a live band, Boomers, from Kansas City area, classic rock and roll. They'll be starting at 7:00, and it's usually about a two-hour show, two, two-and-a-half hour. And then the fireworks begin around 9:30. Now, we'll put a caveat on that. It's usually depending on dusk. It just kind of all depends on the tests and the lighting and everything, but we usually say 9:30, and if we shoot in by 10, then we hit our mark. So this is a big endeavor, and I want to thank the police department, emergency management, South Metro Fire, numerous volunteers, and of course, my staff for the hard work they put into this. So just want to invite everybody to come out next Monday.
Thank you, Nathan. Yes, Sonya?
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I have had a few people ask me, so I want to be sure I'm passing along the correct information, which I think I am. Raving about last year's fireworks show, this year's the same company doing the fireworks for us, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I thought so. Thank you.
And just to let you know, I wasn't able to make the car show this year, so Mr. Barber has the mayor's choice authority on the car show. He's really looking forward to that.
He's on the hook now.
Yeah. Thank you, Nathan. Anything else?
That concludes staff reports, sir.
All right. Thank you. We have no committee reports tonight, do we? Any committee reports?
Only if you would like to update the public on last Friday's tour, sir.
Certainly. I'd actually let Mr. Tap do that. Matt, why don't you come up and let him know what you did for us, what you set up for us last Friday?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and esteemed members of the city council. We scheduled a tour, a very adventurous tour, multiple stops throughout the Missouri side of the Kansas City metropolitan area. We hit a number of luxury apartment developments, as well as light industrial, to kind of get a look and feel, a touch and feel, see what it looks like kind of approach. So hopefully, the city council members that did attend enjoyed their time. It was a very aggressive timeline, but we hit a number of places, and I hope that you learned a lot.
We did. I've had some wonderful, positive comments from the members that were able to be there, and I enjoyed it. I know immensely that we were able to actually visually capture some of the things that we might have the opportunity to bring here to Raymore, and so it was an excellent tour. Thank you very much for putting that together. Thank you. Sonya?
Thanks. Sorry. I enjoyed whoever was tweeting where you guys were going. I wasn't able to go on the tour, but I did enjoy being able to follow along via Twitter, so I appreciated that piece for those of us who weren't able to be there.
Yes, that's compliments of my Eke Communications Manager. So yes. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
That is all, sir.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion to dispose of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include items A, city council minutes for June 13, 2016, and item B, 2015 sidewalk project final acceptance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, both items. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is our unfinished business. Ms. Warner, could I please have the second reading of Bill 3173 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3173 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement with Brenton Electric Company, Inc., for the original Raymore sidewalk lighting project in the amount of $12,567, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Unfinished business, sir.
Unfinished? Okay. Is there a motion to dispose of Bill 3173?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3173 and a word of contract for the original town sidewalk lighting project.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve Bill 3173. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, could I please have the second reading of Bill 3178 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3178 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2016 capital budget.
Is there a motion to dispose of Bill 3178?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3178 for a budget amendment for the original town sidewalk lighting project.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill 3178. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is, could we please have the second reading of Bill 3175 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3175 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving a conditional use permit for the Raymore Municipal Center public building and outdoor space to be located on Lot 8, Lot 9, and Common Area A in the Raymore Municipal Complex, First Platte, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Is there a motion to dispose of Bill 3175?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3175 for the Raymore Municipal Center conditional use permit.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Bill 3175. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Again, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Warner, could I have the second reading of Bill 3176 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3176 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving the final plat for High Point at Creek Moor, Third Platte, Lots 45 through 62, and Trax E&amp;F, located in Section 8 Township 46 North, Range 32 West, Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Is there a motion to dispose of Bill 3176?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3176 for the High Point at Creek Moor, Third, final plat.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve Bill 3176. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3177 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3177 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving an amendment to the 2016 Parks and Recreation operating budget for personnel.
Is there a motion to dispose of Bill 3177?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3177 for a budget amendment for the Parks and Recreation programming personnel.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill 3177. Any discussion? Ms. Hubach?
Yes, I wanted to ask Mr. Musteen a question about it. This individual is that we're going to hire, whatever it is, is that a, which I understand, you're eliminating two part-time positions and making one full-time. But my question would be, will that give you the flexibility that you need? Because if you hire a full-time person, and they're not management, and we take them outside of their work schedule, then we have to end up paying overtime. And so I'm trying to figure out if it's better for the city to have part-time rather than to have a full-time, when you consider also the benefits that have to be paid for full-time and not for part.
Mr. Musteen?
Yes, ma'am. This position actually does give us, it gives us more flexibility in the fact that the position will have hours that are listed as nights, weekends. We can flex those hours to accommodate the programs and the special events that we have, and it allows us to use them more frequently than what a part-time position would be. The part-time position that we're changing or eliminating was strictly an office assistant position, and this puts the change over to the field more frequently.
Anyone else? Thank you, Nathan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3179 by title only?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, I believe, item F, Bill 3166 for the
Oh, you're right. I went to check Mark II soon there. Sorry. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3166?
The second reading of Bill 3166 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending Chapter 545, Property Maintenance Code of the Raymore City Code.
Thank you. Is there a motion to dispose of Bill 3166?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3166 for amendments to the property maintenance code.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill 3166. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we'll get on to the second reading of Bill 3179 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3179 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Midland Wrecking, Inc., for the demolition of structures and remediation of hazardous materials.
Thank you. Is there a motion to dispose of Bill 3179?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3179 and a word of contract for demolition and remediation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill 3179. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Warner, could I please have the second reading of Bill 3180 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3180 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2016 capital budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion to dispose of Bill 3180?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3180 for a budget amendment for the 210 South Adams Street property, capital improvement process.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill 3180. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now under new business. The first item under new business is liquor license application by Freedom Plaza LLC, also known as Freedom Stop. It requires a public hearing. I will open the public hearing, and could I have a staff report, please?
I'll begin the staff report with Ms. Warner, please.
Thank you. Lori O'Malley and Ray Clifton, on behalf of Freedom Plaza LLC, doing business as Freedom Stop, located at 503 through 505 East Walnut, have filed an application for a 2016-2017 liquor license. The applicant has submitted the necessary application and supporting documents as outlined by City Code. If approved by the city council, further approval to obtain a license from the city of Raymore is subject to state requirements and state licensing. That concludes my portion of the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. I would call on Mr. Zer.
Thank you, Mr. Feerborn. I have just a little bit additional information with regard to the staff report for this application. This application has involved a store located at 503-505 Walnut at this time. Prior to this point, the property had an operating entity there by the identification of Payall Enterprise. That operation entity had an occupation license with the city of Raymore, which expired on December 31, 2015, according to the records within the city of Raymore. In addition to that, the entity was also administratively dissolved by the Secretary of State prior to that time in April of 2015. Following the expiration of the entity's occupation license, Freedom Plaza LLC, the entity seeking the application here, applied for and received an occupation license from the city on June 6, 2016. Between the expiration in December of 2015 and the application for a new license in June of 2016, there does not appear to have been a valid occupation license at that particular location. During the course of prior involvements involving the occupation license, representations were made by Lori O'Malley, which this council heard during the course of the April 25 public hearing on the occupation license, indicating that the property, Ms. O'Malley explained that Payall has asked to be released from the current lease of the property, and the landlord company is in the midst of releasing the tenant company and operating company. She expected that the release would be complete no later than May 15, but is hopeful that it would be done as soon as May 6. After that time, on June 17, 2016, an officer from the Raymore Police Department, an un-uniformed officer purchased alcohol from the store on June 17, 2016. That is additional information for consideration by the council on this particular application. I would also ask that, at this time, these are public hearings. Witnesses be sworn in by the clerk of the city, Ms. Warner.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Zer, at this point? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing further to the applicant, if you care to address the council? Or anyone else who is interested in speaking? We need to swear in.
If you'll state your name and address for the record?
Lori O'Malley, 431 Pinnacle Drive, Raymore, Missouri, 64083.
And are you a resident of the city?
I am.
You'll raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. O'Malley.
Hi, I'm Lori O'Malley, here on behalf of Freedom Plaza LLC, 503 through 505 East Walnut Street. I'm here in consideration of the liquor license that was filed for both the convenience store and the restaurant. I believe that all necessary documents have been received by the city.
Okay. Anything else?
I believe I was called to answer some questions, so I'm here to answer some questions.
I'm not sure. Does anybody have any questions at this point? Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else care to address the council? Okay. No one else? I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we'll move on. Is there a motion to dispose of the liquor license application?
Mr. Mayor, I move to deny the liquor license application for Freedom Plaza LLC, doing business as Freedom Stop.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to deny the liquor license application. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, we're in the middle of a motion right now, at this point. I think it's out of order. Any discussion on the council? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed? We have six opposing, one for. The license is denied. Next item on the agenda is a liquor license.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe you just said that six opposed, the motion was to deny.
Oh, six favor, I'm sorry. Six in favor of the motion to deny.
I will ask, does that, did we just deny that liquor license?
The motion was to deny.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is a liquor license application for Mexico Viejo LLC. This also requires a public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Ms. Warner for the staff report.
Thank you. Angelica Caratachia, on behalf of Mexico Viejo LLC, located at 1276 West Foxwood Drive, has filed an application for a 2016-2017 liquor license. The applicant has submitted the necessary application and supporting documents as outlined by City Code. If approved by the city council, further approval to obtain a license from the city of Raymore is subject to state requirements and state licensing. That concludes my staff report.
Very well. Do you have anything else, Mr. Feerborn?
That concludes staff reports, sir.
Okay. At this point, it is open to public hearing, would the applicant care to address the council? No? Okay. Anyone else care to address the council with regard to the liquor application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask the council to, is there a motion to dispose of the liquor license application for Mexico Viejo?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the liquor license application for Mexico Viejo LLC.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the liquor license application for Mexico Viejo. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the lease agreement for the range. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3181 by title only, please?
The first reading of Bill 3181 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Pessek Family Land LLC, for the lease of property to be used as the Raymore Police Department firing range.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would call on Chief Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Feerborn. As the council remembers, in the work session on June 6, we discussed the property and all that that would entail. There, on the Pessek land at 321st and 291 Highway, just north of the property there that was previously owned by his company as well. That land, as you see on that agreement and the ordinance that's before you tonight, has already been developed into a range. There are still some additional things that need to be done, as we discussed during that work session, such as the addition of a fence and some additional work to the burms in that area as well. But he has moved along, you know, quite nicely with the development of that property, and with the approval of that by the council, we'll be able to go in and do that additional work to make the range operational, which we can't hardly wait to do. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
Go ahead, Jay.
Chief, having reviewed all the information on this and having seen the land...
Chief, having reviewed all the information on this and having seen the land, this is a good deal for you, and it's a good deal for us, therefore it's a good deal for the citizens of Raymore. I know I'm asking you to put the cart before the horse, but do you have an idea when it'll be operational for your officers to use?
Soon as the mayor signs on the dotted line, we will be out there shooting.
Fair enough, thank you.
Absolutely, we can actually, sort of to your point, sir, that some additional work does need to be done for that long-range shooting that we would be doing with rifle qualification and that sort of thing, but the up-close handgun shooting, we can do just as soon as we have the opportunity to be out there.
Okay, yes.
Thank you, I just have a quick question, one that might come up in conversation. How often do you expect that your officers will be using this firing range?
Part of our challenge has always been the unavailability of places for us to go shoot, and having to schedule that, you know, the range that we've been shooting on, the conservation property that is operated by the Harrisonville Police Department, makes it problematic for us to go there, because, you know, we have to have somebody come and inspect it ahead of time and inspect it afterwards. We know we're not going to be out there shooting every day, that's the reason why you see some language in this, this contract that says that we will be able to allow others, the Cass County Sheriff's Department and other departments that are constantly like us, looking for a place to shoot. So, you know, now that we will have the opportunity to go out, before coordinating, having all of our folks go all at once, created significant overtime, you know, there were a lot of issues with trying to get everybody in one place all at the same time. This will give us the opportunity to take people out during their duty hours and not have to bring people in special and have Harrisonville come and open it up. So, I would see us being out there in some form or fashion every week, but using some of those off days when we're not shooting to allow other agencies, law enforcement folks, to come out and shoot as well.
Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I see on item, exhibit B, number, item number one, overhead baffle system, what is that? Is that for acoustic sound attenuation, or can you explain that?
It's actually, it's actually both. The baffle system also keeps sound within the range, but it keeps bullets from skipping out, so if you're shooting from a distance, when you have that overhead baffle system, it's just another layer of protection from anybody shooting into the berm with having those bullets actually leave the range area. Sure.
Ms. Morehead, did you have something? Okay. Okay, so before us, we have the first reading of Bill 3181, is there a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3181?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3181 for a lease agreement for a firing range.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill 3181, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item also deals with the range, could I please have the first reading of Bill 3182 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3182 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending the fiscal year 2015-2016 general fund budget and the capital improvement fund budget.
Thank you, is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. Bill 3181, just approved by the council on first reading, for an agreement to the lease property for the firing range, does require a budget amendment. This amendment calls for a move of $6,000 from a restricted capital fund that it is in, the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund, to the General Operating Fund for the Police Department contractual line item, to allow for the $6,000 lease payment for the range to be made out of an operating fund, because generally accepted counting principles would not allow for that to be made, an operating payment to be made out of a capital fund. So, staff does recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none, is there a motion to dispose of 3182?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3182 for a budget amendment for the firing range.
Second. Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3182, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item on the agenda is, could I please have the first reading of Bill 3183 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3183 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri amending Title 7 of the Raymore City Code, Section 705.040, water meters.
Thank you, is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir, I would ask Mr. Grass to make a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As part of the APWA self-assessment process, as we're looking at what our practices are and some of the code authority that is associated with those, we found a discrepancy in the water meter maintenance and ownership section of the code that doesn't align with what our practice has been for quite some time. So what we are asking for is a change to the section, and it's highlighted in A, in red, what it, what it does is clarify that, just like with a residential meter, the property owner pays for the initial installation of the meter, and then upon it being placed in service, it becomes property of the city, just like any other infrastructure for our repair, maintenance, and replacement. So we are requesting council approve this code amendment.
Thank you, Mike, any questions of Mike? Anything else, Mr. Fearborn?
That concludes staff report, sir.
Thank you. So is there a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3183?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3183 for amending city code regarding water meters.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill 3183, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. That ends old business, or excuse me, new business, we're now on to public comments, we'll open public comments, if you wish to address the council, please identify yourself for the record, keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight? Thank you. And we'll start off over here on this end tonight, Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have many comments to make tonight, I do want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, hope everybody enjoys it, enjoys their family, their friends, the fireworks that we'll be having down here at the park, and most of all, stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Morehead.
The only thing I guess I would say is, this last May, I was honored because the Missouri Municipal League invited me to serve as one of 10 other council members, or city council members throughout the state of Missouri regarding municipal administration, to serve on a state policy board. I went last Thursday to Columbia and attended that for the first time, and was honored to represent the City of Raymore and everyone else here in the county, so it was a lot of fun, and I appreciated the honor.
Thank you. Mr. Holman.
Thank you, sir. I would concur and echo Councilmember Kellogg's comments about the upcoming Fourth of July holiday, our celebration, and requesting everyone stay safe, we don't want to get hurt. Congratulate Councilmember Morehead on the comments that he just made, and congratulations to Councilmember Barber, remembered your name tonight, and go get him at the car show, sir.
All right, there you go. Ms. Abdal, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I'm going to say that I'm really looking forward to next Monday night, the fireworks in the park, that's always fun, and want to, secondly, I guess, invite everyone out to all the festivities out there. I had one other thing, oh, and don't forget the farmer's market tomorrow night. We went last week, and there were tons of vendors there, and lots of people buying things, and just a fun atmosphere if you're looking for something to do on a Tuesday night.
Ms. Hubach.
Well, as you all know, I live on the highest elevation in Cass County, so when you have fireworks, I see them all, I see them all, and it's just marvelous. So I, if there was parking space, I'd invite you all to come out and see it, but there's not, so you come to the city parking lot and enjoy it there, it's really great. And finally, I want to say thank you to, on the tour, Ms. Hawk and the mayor, who both have made it easy for me on some of those bad places, sidewalks. But I'll tell you this, I'm ready for the next one, and I'd like to see one for the City of Raymore and see what we can do for that one, too, so have at it.
Thank you. Mr. Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Tap for last Friday, I really, I enjoyed it, and, but I was surprised, I think, as much as anything. I saw some things that I really didn't have any expectation, but I was really encouraged about what I saw. I know it was a lot to put it together, and I, and I know we now have an economic team, it's a team approach, and kind of saw that in play Friday, and the relationships that you folks have, that was impressive, very impressive from, from my point of view. One of the things that I got out of the whole deal on Friday is the two cities we went to, Gladstone and North Kansas City, is they both had a strategic plan, and they stuck to it. And they went through, it's kind of the war, you know, we had the '08 recession, and they talked about all of that, but they stuck to their strategic plan, and the outcome may have been a little different, they painted the picture in the beginning and look at it at the end, it may have been a little different than what their expectations were, but I think it was better than their expectations, so I'm encouraged by that. I look forward for our continued sticking to our strategic plan, and I'm, I like what Ms. Hubach had to say about really, we may need to take a tour of our own city, to kind of look at where you're going to plug and play some of those things that you, your vision that you showed us. Last but not least, I want to thank the mayor for trusting me to take his place on Monday, July 4. I won't let you down, and I should have some fun, and look forward to seeing everybody out there, thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
I'll be another judge at the car show as well, I'll keep an eye on him, so.
Okay, thank you. I would like to thank Mike Eke for all the work on the website, it is going to really add up to be something nice for folks who are looking into our community, as well as finding out what other amenities we have and services. I do think it is going to be much more helpful to them to negotiate that website, it looks great so far. You might want to keep the thing in about the inmates, you never know. No, but, but thank you, Mike, a lot of hard work there, and I appreciate that, and everybody on the council appreciates that. And also, I wanted to say thank you to Matt Tap as well, and Meredith, and Mr. Fearborn, we, we had a great time last Friday, it was a lot of work, it was on a hot day, but we saw some great projects out there. Mr. Catterett was with us along the way, helping, helping us with the, some of the things that we've talked about on the vision for some of the areas of Raymore, so it was, it was a great opportunity for us to get out and see what other communities are doing, other identities that they're trying to portray, such as Gladstone with their downtown identity, and it was really awesome to see all of that, and, and like Kevin said, the relationships that have been built there already, because it is very important that those relationships grow and, and are maintained, and I would like to get a couple of them here to show them around, you know, they, one of the perceptions they have with Raymore is not quite what we have of Raymore, and I think getting those, those individuals, those developers out here to take a look at our city, and maybe go with us when we make our tour, and we can show them around, would be helpful. And that's all I have tonight, I thank you, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss real estate acquisition matters as authorized under revised statutes in Missouri 610.021 subsection 2.
Second.
Thank you, the motion's been made and seconded to move into executive session, could I please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Abdal Gwain?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke absent, Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes. We will go into executive session now and adjourn, just long enough to adjourn the meeting for the, this, this session, thank you.